Welcome to your Greeley-Evan School Board meeting. It is Monday, June 26, 2017. This meeting is now called to order. Will you join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call Ms. Crane.
Mr. Dewitt.
Present.
Mr. Haley.
Present.
Mr. Hall.
Present.
Mr. Lydiak.
Present.
Yay!
(laughing) Made it. Ms. Pappas?
Ms. Pappas is excused this evening.
Dr. Richard?
Present.
Mrs. Solis?
Present.
Six members present.
Thank you. We do want to welcome Mr. Lydiak on radio.
Well, thank you, Mr. Dewitt. It's good to be back and be engaged, so...
Well, great. We'll put you back to work here pretty quick. We did want to mention that as we look at summertime, our schools are and our staff still keeping pretty busy. And that busy attitude is reflecting the three key words that our district has been kind of promising to focus on this year: engage, empower, and inspire. This evening, we have the opportunity to take a look at the hiring of a set of collaborators at the Fred Chardis School, and that's certainly literally engaging them in that activity, and we know that that's going to have some positive side effects. In terms of empowering, we also take a look at the creation at Billy Martinez through the state as a school of innovation, and we take a look at the inspiration, is the possible exchange opportunities for Brentwood and Dos Rios with their counterparts in China. So, all of these things and more will be discussed this evening, but all of them are reflective of the board and the school district's intent to engage, empower, and inspire. At this time, I have the opportunity of asking for folks who are interested in speaking before the board to do so, and I have one person who's expressed an interest in speaking to the board, Pastor Meek. Slowly approach the bench because your time begins when you do.
Well, thank you again for the opportunity to be here. I was out of the country, so that's why I missed the last meetings, and I won't go into all those details. And since this is the celebration week, it's Stampede time. But I think tonight, I thought it'd be good to thank all the veterans of all the wars, men and women. So, any veterans here? Got one, two, okay? And so, I appreciate the freedom that veterans have given to us. First of all, I think we have to remind ourselves that the pastors in early America had a great deal to do with the freedoms that we enjoy tonight. They had a great deal to do to preaching truths from the Bible that had to do with the moral, you know, things that's going on that time, including slavery. For years, they did that, and most of them heard them preach. Unlike today, don't very many hear us preach. And some of you here on Hellovision don't always tell the truth, but anyway, I think we need to honor them, our veterans, and be reminded again, it's because of veterans and the pastors, and the pastors and the veterans. There's one story, Dave Barton, wall builders, as some of you know, one pastor done a sermon. Then he took off his robe, walked out the door, and said, "Come and go with me." And about all the men went with him and went to war right then. And so, I am also a veteran, and I'm proud to be a veteran. And of course, the Vietnam War was the one that chased me, and so, I just joined the Air Force and didn't do anything for three years in England, Germany. And then I was called into ministry, so I thought, "Well, I'll volunteer for Vietnam," and then go to Babah College. And that's what I did, but they sent me to Thailand instead. And I'm considered a Vietnam vet because of that. But I am so glad, the freedoms that we enjoy tonight. I can say just about anything, and I don't have to worry about Mr. Gates hauling me out of here, slamming me to the floor, shooting me, or anybody else as far as that goes. I think we owe a lot to our men and our women, and I'm proud to be one of them. I've been to three funerals in four days. Two of them are veterans. One of them here, Charlie Laurent, the other one's a rodeo chaplain who I've known for 40 years. The first national-appointed rodeo chaplain of the Assemblies of God, him and his wife. They've been here to the rodeo camps, taught, preached in my church, but cancer finally got him last week. So, I come to you with a very, very heavy heart, of course. And so, I just think we ought to honor them, and you continue to do what you do. I know some of the schools have us come and share, and I really appreciate that. Let's keep it up. Maybe do a big November thing, you know, for Veterans' Day, something, and maybe already do that, but just push it again to the, you know, through the school district. So, thank you very much, and Lord, keep us free.
Thank you, Pastor. The next item is the work session report. Ms. Crane?
Board of Education President Roger Dewitt began the work session by reviewing the calendar of upcoming events and next year's schedule. Mr. Dewitt then proceeded with comments and updates from each board member. Superintendent Dr. Deirdre Pilch shared the accomplishments and next steps for Innovation 2020. Dr. Pilch and Dr. Richard provided information on the preparations for the potential ballot measure. Board members had an opportunity for questions and comments, and that concluded the work session.
Thank you, ma'am. Dr. Pilch, superintendent's report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Dewitt. I will keep this brief since it is Stampede week, and some folks are trying to get out to bull riding tonight, I think. So, I first want to acknowledge that we have two very important contracts on our consent agenda tonight that we won't call out in the meeting, but are on the consent agenda with ABC Bright Schools and the Colorado Early Education Network. I want to call this partnership out and these contracts out because it is through this work with the Bright Schools and with our Head Start Program, our Colorado Early Education Network, that we are able, as a community, to actually provide preschool services throughout the community for any student in need and have those preschoolers ready for kindergarten when they hit our doors. This is a tremendous partnership, and we could not be doing what we are able to do here in District 6 without this partnership. So, thank you to them, and a big shout-out to them, and it's an important contract. These are dollars that flow directly to us from the state of Colorado. They're called CPP dollars, and then we funnel those dollars to ABC Bright Schools to provide the preschool funding for those children, and it's just really, really important work. So, thank you to them, and thank you to the other preschool providers in our school district as well. I also want to point out that it is June, our last June board meeting of 2017, which means that I have had the privileges serving as your superintendent of schools for two official school years now. Yay![495.81][495.81](applause) Yes, yes. And tonight, in our work session, as Ms. Crane indicated, we did an overview of our strategic plan and the work that we've accomplished over the last two years as a result of the strategic plan and the work we plan to do next year. And I couldn't be happier to be the one who has been charged with and privileged with being able to lead that strategic plan, along with you all as my Board of Education and with the amazing staff who I have around me. I have a tremendous team, and we are getting amazing, remarkable, significant, and very messy and very important work done here in District 6, and we are doing it every single day, and we couldn't be doing it without the support of you, our Board of Education. So, thank you for that, and as we get ready for another school year, you'll have more reports from me, I'm sure. So, thank you.
Well, thank you very much, ma'am, and congrats and encouragement to all your staff. The next item is the approval of the agenda, and I'll now accept a motion to act on this item.
I move that the Board of Education of Weld County School District 6 approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Comments from anyone? Roll call Ms. Crane?
Mr. Dewitt?
Aye.
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mr. Hall?
Aye.
Mr. Lydiak?
Aye. I was on mute.[584.04][584.04](laughing)
Dr. Richard?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Motion carries six-zero.
Lovely. Great to have that vote, Doug. Thank you, sir. The next item is the consent agenda. I'll be glad to accept a motion on that.
I move that the Board of Education of Weld County School District 6 approves items as presented on the consent agenda and authorizes the officers to sign any and all contracts.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion, comments? Roll call Ms. Crane?
Mr. Dewitt?
Aye.
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mr. Hall?
Aye.
Mr. Lydiak?
Aye.
Dr. Richard?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Motion carries six-zero.
Thank you. The next item is a special item, call for elections, and I will accept a motion on this item at this time.
I move that the Board of Education of Weld County School District 6 calls for an election for the purpose of filling vacancies that will occur as current members' terms of office expire and direct the designated election official to notify the county clerk no later than July 28, 2017, that District 6 will participate in a coordinated election. The designated election official is further directed to publish a call for nominations no later than August 9, 2017, in the Greeley Tribune.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion, comment? Dr. Pilch?
I have nothing.
Pretty straightforward. I think we won an election. Anyone else? Roll call Ms. Crane?
Mr. Dewitt?
Aye.
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mr. Hall?
Aye.
Mr. Lydiak?
Aye.
Dr. Richard?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Motion carries six-zero.
Thank you. The next item is another action item. I'd be glad to accept a motion on the item, General Assurances Form Consolidated Grant Application.
I move that the Board of Education of Weld County School District 6 approves the 2017-2018 ESA General Assurances Form and authorizes the officers to sign the form.
Dr. Pilch, something?
I will just say that these are the forms that we must provide the federal government as a result of our agreeing to accept federal funding. And so, within the next week, you will have the full application for the consolidated grant that you'll have for your purview, but tonight's action item is about approving the assurances, basically our promise to the federal government on how we plan to spend those dollars, and then they'll get the full document here in the next week or so.
And this is Title I, Title II, Title III, special ed?
Yes, absolutely. All those federal dollars.
Comments from board members?
So, before you do that, the one thing I should probably add is that, you know, we've been hearing a lot about ESA, this E-S-E-A, and the changes in ESA for the local school districts and for the state of Colorado. We don't know yet what that impact might be, but the projections are that we will very likely see some decrease in funding in all of these federal grant areas. So, you know, more to come on that. Right now, we're planning, you know, we will spend every dollar we get, and that's what we're planning to do, and we'll adjust over time if it looks like we receive less funding than what we had anticipated.
And it certainly behoves us to agree and to live under the rules and regulations, whatever they may end up being. Comments from board members at this time? Roll call Ms. Crane?
Mr. Dewitt?
Aye.
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mr. Hall?
Aye.
Mr. Lydiak?
Aye.
Dr. Richard?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Motion carries six-zero.
Under board priorities, we're doing some continuing spring house cleaning on some items associated with policies. Some are encouraged by our own review, and some are encouraged by state and federal law changes. The first one is revisions to Policy AC, Non-Discrimination Equal Opportunity. I will accept a motion on this item at this time.
I move that the Board of Education of Weld County School District 6 approves the revisions to Policy AC, Non-Discrimination Equal Opportunity as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded a couple of times. Comments? We've had the opportunity to read through these changes. Dr. Pilch, anything necessary?
No, other, just a reminder that the first batch of policies you're seeing tonight, like this one, are revision to existing policies. We saw them at the last board meeting, or we've seen them in the past because they're existing policies, and then you'll begin to see some policies that are actually new policies that are second read tonight.
Other comments? Roll call Ms. Crane?
Mr. Dewitt?
Aye.
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mr. Hall?
Aye.
Mr. Lydiak?
Aye.
Dr. Richard?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Motion carries six-zero.
The next item is revision to Policy BCB, Board Member Conflict of Interest, and there's just an update on that particular situation. I'll be glad to accept a motion on this item.
I move that the Board of Education of Weld County School District 6 approves the revisions to Policy BCB, Board Member Conflict of Interest as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Dr. Pilch?
Again, this is a revision to existing policy, and so, we're asking for an approval of that revision tonight. The changes that are here are primarily as a result of new federal guidelines that basically are saying that school board members nor their immediate families can benefit financially in any way from the utilization of federal dollars that we might receive as a school district.
It's been moved and seconded, and no discussion on the board here since we've had the opportunity to read through all of these items. Roll call Ms. Crane?
Mr. Dewitt?
Aye.
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mr. Hall?
Aye.
Mr. Lydiak?
Aye.
Dr. Richard?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Motion carries six-zero.
Thank you, ma'am. Next revision is to Policy BEDF, Voting Method. Be glad to accept a motion on this item.
I move that the Board of Education of Weld County School District 6 approve the revisions to Policy BEDF, Voting Method, as presented.
Second.
Second.
Thank you both. Dr. Pilch, quick comment?
This policy revision is a result of the previous policy you just approved, that because in the previous policy, you identified conflict of interest and what that means for board members, we can now take this language out of this policy and update it.
We do good work. Other comments? Roll call Ms. Crane?
Mr. Dewitt?
Aye.
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mr. Hall?
Aye.
Mr. Lydiak?
Aye.
Dr. Richard?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Motion carries six-zero.
Thank you, ma'am. Next revision is to Policy DJE, another bidding procedure discussion. We took a look at this before. I'll be glad to accept a motion on this.
I move that the Board of Education of Weld County School District 6 approves the revisions to Policy DJE, bidding procedures as presented. Second.
Thank you both. Dr. Pilch?
So, this is a very slight revision that simply cross-references this policy with another policy that is a new policy for us, DJB. So, very slight revision with just a reference in it.
Again, we've had the opportunity to read through these items. No other comments? Roll call Ms. Crane?
Mr. Dewitt?
Aye.
Mr. Hall?
Mr. Hall?
Aye.
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mr. Dewitt?
Switched up.
I'm sorry. Mr. Lydiak?
Aye.
Dr. Richard?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Motion carries six-zero.
Thank you. The next item is a revision to Policy IKF, Graduation Requirements, and we did have the opportunity to look through these before. I'll be glad to accept a motion on this item.
I move that the Board of Education of Weld County School District 6 approves the revisions to Policy IKF, Graduation Requirements as Presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Graduation requirements. We've got some things lining up for each student to be able to perform.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Dewitt. So, these graduation requirements were initially adopted about a year ago. You all approved new graduation requirements to begin with the class of 2021, which is actually the ninth grade class this next fall. They're the class of 2021. There are slight revisions to language in the policy that we're asking you to approve, primarily in reference to meeting the needs of our students with individual education plans, or IEPs. And so, if I may just birdwalk for one moment about IEPs, I should have mentioned in my opening comments that also tonight, we approved those preschool slots for our students who need special education services, and those services are provided by university preschool as well as by ABC Bright preschool. So, we couldn't do that work at the tiny, tiny years of preschool for special education without the support of those partners, and we see the benefit when those same students will become high school graduates one day, walking with a diploma from District 6.
Thanks for that, Dr. Pilch. I appreciate it. It's been moved and seconded. I see no one asking to make comment. Roll call Ms. Crane?
Mr. Dewitt?
Aye.
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mr. Hall?
Aye.
Mr. Lydiak?
Aye.
Dr. Richard?
Aye.
Dr. Richard?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Motion carries six-zero.
Thank you very much, all of you. The next item is the second read and adoption of new fiscal policies. We did have the opportunity to review these. I'll accept a motion on this item.
I move that the Board of Education of Weld County School District 6 approve the adoption of Policies DAC, Federal Fiscal Compliance, DIA, Online Schools and Programs, DJB, Federal Procurement, and DKC, Expense Authorization Reimbursement, Mileage and Travel, as well as the regulation DJBR, Federal Procurement as Presented.
Second.
Thank you. Dr. Pilch, we have had the opportunity to go through this. Is there anything that moves you to speak on one of those items?
I will just simply remind you that on all of these that are coming up on second read, you heard first read at the last board meeting. This section of fiscal policies all are in relation to new federal guidelines that have come down to us.
Sounds good to me. Roll call Ms. Crane?
Mr. Dewitt?
Aye.
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mr. Hall?
Aye.
Mr. Lydiak?
Aye.
Dr. Richard?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Motion carries six-zero.
Next item is the second read and adoption of new support services policies. I'd be glad to accept a motion at this time on this item.
I move that the Board of Education of Weld County School District 6 approves the adoption of Policies EF, School Nutrition Program, and EFC, Free Reduced Price Food Services as Presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, and, Dr. Pilch, this is material that we discussed and had explained to us in our last meeting, and living up to the federal obligations associated with the nutrition program. Anything else?
I don't have anything to add.
Thank you, ma'am. Comment from a board member regarding this revisiting? Roll call, or rather, yeah, roll call Ms. Crane?
Mr. Dewitt?
Aye.
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mr. Hall?
Aye.
Mr. Lydiak?
Aye.
Dr. Richard?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Motion carries six-zero.
Thank you. Number eight is the second read and adoption of new instruction policies. I'll be glad to accept a motion on this item now.
I move that the Board of Education of Weld County School District 6 approves the adoption of Policies IHAM, Health and Family Life Sex Education, and IHBK, Preparation for Post-Secondary Education Options and Regulations, IHAMR, Health Education Exemption Procedure, and IHBK, Preparation for Post-Secondary and Workforce Success as Presented.
Been glad to hear a second on that. Dr. Pilch, once again, we did discuss these features about informing faculty, or family, and making sure that all of our students have preparation for post-secondary and college kind of opportunities or work. Anything come to mind that you need to offer?
I would just add that these policies put into policy, they codify work that has already been ongoing in District 6 around individual career and academic plans and post-secondary planning. So, you know, this codifies it for us. I will again remind you that these are requirements coming to us from the state level that are unfunded mandates, again, that come without additional dollars. But I do recommend your approval nonetheless.
This seems an appropriate suggestion on your part. Thank you very much. Other comments from board members? Roll call Ms. Crane?
Mr. Dewitt?
Aye.
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mr. Hall?
Aye.
Mr. Lydiak?
Aye.
Dr. Richard?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Motion carries six-zero.
Thank you. The next item, number nine, is the second read and adoption of new students' policy. Again, it's not new to us. I'll be glad to accept a motion on this item.
I move that the Board of Education of Weld County School District 6 approves the adoption of Policy JLJ, Physical Activity as Presented.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Dr. Pilch, this just encourages our kids to get up and move around, and we certainly see plenty of examples of that in the district through, you know, pre-K to 12.
Yeah. We know that students who are moving more have more active brains. The research is clear on this. So, I'm excited to see this in policy, and even though it comes as a recommendation from the federal and state level, it's the right thing to do.
In addition to that is a good reason, and this doesn't have an effect on any board member, does it? We don't necessarily have to...
Yes, when you are at schools, you must do recess.
I see. All right. Well, I guess I can go that. Other comments or questions from board members? Roll call Ms. Crane?
Mr. Dewitt?
Aye.
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mr. Hall?
Aye.
Mr. Lydiak?
Aye.
Dr. Richard?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Motion carries six-zero.
Thank you, ma'am. The next and last item is the repeal of Policy IHA, Basic Instructional Program. I'm glad to accept a motion on this item at this time.
I move that the Board of Education of Weld County School District 6 repeals Policy IHA, Basic Instructional Program as Presented.
Second.
And, Dr. Pilch, because of our previous work, this is no longer necessary, and so, we can say goodbye to this particular policy.
Yes, I'm keeping count. We approved four new policies, and we're eliminating one old policy. That's not a very good record for us.
I have a feeling we're probably going to do a little more of each before the year is up.
We are.
Well, thank you very much for your attention and for staff efforts to get this, these things cleared up and brought to modernity. things cleared up and brought to modernity. Other comments? Mr. Lydiak, do you have any final word on this, since we're so delighted to hear your voice?
No, I appreciate being able to attend electronically, and again, it's good to